Is that bees coming?
Commissioner Reed's gonna be online and then Andrew's usually.
Can you hear me?
Okay, we're ready? Okay, welcome to our planning commission meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Opening ceremonies, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Stimson and then prayer or moment of silence by Commissioner Lamar.
Please stand and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity. We have to get, to come together and make decisions and for the benefit of our city that we are so much enjoy being a part of and serving. We ask that you provide us the wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire community and those that are here before us tonight. Say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, action on the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes?
I do have a clarification on item three A. The last line is not really clear. What it should say there is the draft of the minutes said, "I voted aye, but in reality, I voted nay." I don't know how you wanna wordsmith that.
So just clarify that you voted nay on item number five on the previous.
Yes.
Okay, with that correction, any other corrections, edits?
If you're looking for me, that would be a no.
Okay, I was wondering where you were, Jeff. Okay, so Jeff is with us online. So with that, I'm ready for a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Last meeting, sorry. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stimson, a second by Commissioner Hepworth. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
That was an aye, okay. So minutes are approved. We'll move along to action by city council. Amy, do we have anything to report?
Yes, so the, it was kind of the meeting of the Walmart because there was, you guys had acted on, you had the public hearing on the road vacation and then recommended the road vacation. That got brought back up. And they, they voted to approve that road vacation of Hunter Drive. And then the preliminary site plan, they did approve that of Walmart too. Those were the, the two things from the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, those have been sitting for a while, so that's good.
It has because there, all the party, all three parties, Walmart, forty-one hundred west and the city were trying to work out a participation agreement on how to rebuild Hunter Drive. And until that got put back onto the agenda, we need, that needed to happen before they could vote on the other because you didn't wanna vacate a road and move it if we didn't have any sort of agreement as to what was gonna happen with it.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, thank you, Amy. Alright, we'll move along to the next agenda item, number five. Discussion and action on a final site plan for an auto body shop and educational institution.
So, this is Elite Customs. They already have a, they already have a business. And then this, you have already seen the preliminary site plan regarding this back in March. And so, they've been able to go through and they've gotten the fire approval for that. They've gotten the engineering approval. They, the parking regulations are something that you're going to need to discuss and whether or not you are willing to go down and how much parking is, would be required because of the use of the building. Like, right now, it's looking like it should have eighty-eight stalls, which is like really way too much for what the use of the, the actual building is going to be. You should have the amended landscaping slash parking layout that got put into the, as part of the amended packet yesterday. Cause it, with that, it outlines how many parking stalls there are. So it's gonna be in two phases, so there'll be additional parking once phase two gets put into place. But right now, it's just all the phase one that's outlined in, in that. So, there's that, that you're going to have to just, you know, discuss what you wanna do with it. As I said, engineering has reviewed it, the signage. Currently, the sign requirements are that it's either fifteen percent of square footage of a wall space or it's a maximum of sixty square feet. The current proposed sign is sixteen by four feet, which is sixty-four square feet. Garth and I actually want to bring an amendment to the sign ordinance, hopefully next month, to take out that maximum sixty square feet because it really doesn't make much sense when you're looking, you know, fifteen percent of a wall space actually makes a whole bunch of sense. But like with these big buildings and stuff, but having a maximum square feet of that sixty, I don't know whether or not it just got left in there. You know, when we were reviewing all of the sign ordinance and we just didn't deal with that. We, the fifteen percent makes sense, but why a maximum sixty square feet? I don't know, I don't remember. So that's something that you need to discuss is to, has currently their, their wall sign fits the fifteen percent. It's less than fifteen percent of the square footage of the whole wall that they wanna put it on, but it does not meet the maximum sixty-four square feet. The landscaping, they've done what they needed to do, however, they are asking to only have decorative rock. In the, as part of the packet, well, actually, no, that is not in the packet, but Carl Mackley from Weber Basin sent an email that, and I quoted it in there, that they do not have, Weber Basin does not have an existing secondary water line along twenty-seven hundred west at that location. And if the petitioners were required to connect to their system, they would likely, that they would need to put in a twelve inch water line and run at twelve hundred feet, which is a pretty huge expense for one, for this one lot. And doing decorative rock, they actually have decorative rock on their other piece that is on Midland. And so, we're recommending, staff's recommending that they only be required to do the decorative rock because of the lack of secondary water at the site. The building site layout is compliant with the requirements, including the facade and the, and with the primary materials and the secondary materials and the architectural proceeds, features. It is requested that, as a condition for, of the final, that they enact cross-access easements for the adjacent properties, which should be really relatively simple because the, the petitioner owns all of the property. But if one of the parcels is sold later on, it gives, it gives access to both properties if it needs, if, say like this property needs to access Midland, they're able to do that. Or if the existing building needs to access twenty-seven hundred west, they're able to do that. But there have been other times when we've seen this be an issue later on where the property owner owns like everything and then they end up selling it for whatever reason. And so then there's issues with cross-access easements. And so, with the petitioner owning everything, it should be relatively simple to be able to do that. But that's, that should be everything. And so, I'm not sure if the petitioner is here.
Do we have anyone here?
So if you guys have any questions, wanna talk about the, like with the parking issues or with the landscaping issue or any other issues.
So we don't have anyone here from?
No, they are here.
Oh, they are here, okay.
Yeah.
Before they come up, I was just, so can we make an exception on the sign or we have to stick with the ordinance?
There is a thing in there about, and this is.
This, the sign that will be hanging on the building is the same sign that hung on my.
Just before we get started, can I just have your name and address, please?
Blaine Willardson. I've got multiple addresses in West Haven, which one would you like?
Your home address.
Uh, thirty-five ten South Forty-nine Hundred West. The sign that we're referring to is the same sign that's hung on my other building for ten years.
But there's been changes.
And moved it over, over to the other building. I think that a sixty square foot maximum limit on a sign, on a, on a building that's two hundred square, or two, yeah, two hundred, twenty thousand square feet's kinda like, but, what, I don't think we need to legislate everything. But, yeah, does, did anyone have any other questions? The parking, when I came in, in March, I believe it was, they said that there would be no problem getting a variance then, when I explained that, look, we're just a, a shop and we'll be doing some training and that kinda stuff, you know, for, for the youth in the area. And having eighty-something parking spots or something like that is way overkill. I, I need eight or nine is all the tops.
That's, with the parking, that's not exactly what was said back in March. Basically, a condition of the preliminary site plan approval was that he had to deal with bringing this issue back to the planning commission as to, and you guys had to make a decision regarding varying from what was required.
Do we have a, a number at that time, Amy?
Um, yeah, so I'm looking at the minutes from that meeting. And this is what Alka said. Alka wanted to clarify that the educational part, that there would be only one classroom. This approval would be primarily for just the back building. He would have to come back for the second building because of the elevations. There's about nineteen spaces for the cars that he will be working on. That's that shaded, you know, kinda spot right there to the north of the twenty thousand square foot building. So that's nineteen spots. And then, the rest of the parking is mainly what she is looking for, the parking requirement. And then she goes on to say about the, you know, the eighty parking spots. But she was asking the commission to look at reducing that number. He uses typically about fifteen. And so, the answer is yes. That hasn't, the number hasn't changed from the preliminary. But yeah, the staff recommendation of, he had to complete a landscape plan to be submitted and then submission for a variance on the parking to the planning commission.
Any discussions or concerns on the parking?
So I'm counting forty-three parking spots is what you have drawn on here?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know what the actual number ended up being.
With four handicap, I.
That's between the two buildings.
Yeah, that's total on the whole site plan.
I remember talking about the handicap parking. Jeff was talking about that. I don't know if you recall that meeting.
Yeah.
So I do remember going over and trying to get as many spots as they could fit in.
The, the other thing to keep in mind is there will be parking on the adjacent property that I own too.
Is that east? Is that right?
Yeah.
If you look at the, the, there's an aerial shot of the.
So is there, there's not more parking kind of along the south side of the building?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Is there a reason there isn't more parking along the south side of the building? Are those bay doors to go in or?
Yeah, that's what those are.
You mean the west side of the building?
Oh yeah, west side, sorry.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and, and the other thing to keep in mind is the cars that we're working on, they will be in the building. So, but, I mean, I've been running the same business in West Haven since two thousand and four-ish. And I never needed more than two or three spots at one time for a customer. Plus a, you know, a handful of employees, so, you know, the maximum spots that I'll be using were, were well within that number.
So I have a question, I think, that would be more for staff. If it, from what I can see on the drawings, it appears that three parking spaces would be eliminated. And I'm just wondering if that changes anything from the original, yeah, for the approval for Elite Customs from their previous approval. In other words, if we're taking three parking spaces away, how does that impact their previous approval for their business?
I'm not understanding, Jeff, cause I'm showing for their previous, it, there was the nineteen spaces and then.
Amy, I think what he's referring to is the current business that is located there with the new road that's gonna go to the south side of this building. It's getting three of those parking spots?
Thank you for clarifying that, cause I'm, obviously, I don't know how to say that the way that Dustin did. Thank you.
We, the, the, the simple answer to that is we can move three of those parking spots to the piece of ground I also own further south.
So, yeah, he owns.
Collective, collectively between all the properties is seven acres. There's a ton of parking.
So that road, that, that path, you know, that road along the south side, it's not necessarily, my understanding wasn't necessarily designed to be a through access, but the reason why I was asking for the cross-access is just in case they wanted it to be a, be one.
So is that gonna stay, the parking spots on the current asphalt now are gonna stay where they're at? And you're not gonna use that as a thoroughfare?
No, no, we are, yeah. What, what I'm saying is, is that, but like, we can park, we, we can create more parking spots. I assure you, if I have customers coming, I'll create parking spots for them if I'm lacking them.
No, I, I get it. We're just trying to get some connection.
We'll, we'll move to the, the property, the south. I'll, I'll do what I gotta do. But for right now, I think that the parking that we've shown on the, on, there we go, thank you. Cause I, this has been back and forth and changed and, and so many times, I'm not sure how it actually looks, yes. So, yeah, two of those parking spots will get moved, the two there on the east that would be closest to Midland Drive, adjacent to that little triangle that's sitting right there, that's, that's outlined in the, in the part, that would get moved. And like I say, we can add, we can add more all the way down that, that south side there, shall we need to. But, like I say, that, that's excessive parking for the, what we need with the, with the business.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it would be in compliance with their, their current use permit. So that was all I had on the parking. The rest of it, you know, I, I don't have a problem making allowance based upon what you've got here.
Yeah, I'm, I am good with the parking that is allowed. My only concern is, are we, like in the future, so say the business gets sold, is parking gonna be a problem, like for the next business that comes in? I feel like that's enough parking there for, for what the building is built for. And I don't think like the usage can change that much as far as what the building is. Do you know what I'm asking you, Amy?
Yeah, I do. I mean, that would just be, you know, when, if somebody, if, like the building got sold to somebody else and they came in for a business license. It's something that we would just have to be looking at and possibly having them come back, you know, have somebody else come back in for a commercial site plan.
Would it be like, would it be like when we do a conditional use permit? It's just for this condition, for this use, but it's not transferable to the next owner or not?
Yeah, I mean, that would probably be what it would most be like. Because it is very much dependent upon what he is doing and the business that he is wanting to conduct. But, I mean, we have, we actually have another case where, and you guys haven't seen it, but we're probably gonna have to have you see it, that the use of the site was a residential house. And, but it was in its commercial zone and they have done a remodel. But when they did the remodel, they didn't put in enough parking. Now they're wanting to conduct commercial activity and so they're gonna have to come here and talk to you guys as to what their parking situation is and what, you know, as one of the, the issues along with, you know, signage and, and stuff like that. So I see that happening if they sold it.
I think that, that the concern with that is valid, but I also think that there's plenty of space to the north side of this lot, that if someone were to come in and, and buy this building later on, that we could require that it be paved and parking lot put in. Just personally looking at, I do, I, that was my initial thought, but then when I saw the open space to the north end, I think we're, we're well within reason to approve it with the amount of spots that are there now. That open space, if you go back and look at the plan in the March meeting, that's where they were gonna store the cars that they're working on. So, I mean, for this use, that's already spoken for. But that's not to say that a, a different company could use that.
So I'm talking on the very north end where it's showing grass on both their plans. It's, it's, the pavement's not going up that direction.
Oh, right where the mouse is, right there. Okay, I was looking at north of the first phase.
Oh, no. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying is if, if it come up, if it came up and there was need to have more spaces, I think we could require more spaces to be put in there.
Yeah.
So.
I'm going to the sign issue. What are our options for the sign issue? It's new business, so the old sign doesn't, doesn't apply. But, is it possible to do a conditional use or do we have to? I mean, can they, can we deny the sign as is and they can come back after the amendment?
Um, yeah, actually, you could, you could say that he has to have, he has to adjust the size of his wall sign to comply with the sign ordinance. However, he still has to do a building permit for that sign. And hopefully by the time that he submits the sign ordinance, you know, the sign permit, we will have gone in and, and made that adjustment and then we could.
I, I, I need a separate building permit for a sign?
Yes.
It's pretty standard across every city, so. It depends on the size of the sign too, or well, kind of, but.
So, but that, I mean, that's a way to deal with it, cause my intent is to try to bring that ordinance, that sign ordinance, back to you guys next month on December eleventh. And, but then we could, staff could then move forward with it, cause it then would comply with the ordinance.
Come back to us, staff could just go forward.
So, that's, I mean, that's an option that we think about tonight. We could just,
say he has to comply with the sign and then, and then it'll, then you can just go forward.
Just has to comply with the sign ordinance and then by the time he pulls that permit, the sign ordinance should be changed and.
You can just move your sign, you're planning on using the same sign you said, you're just moving it, relocating it?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that sounds, that sounds good. I don't have any questions. We're good on the parking, the sign.
Yeah, and I, the landscaping, I think, is the same situation. I, I don't see a reason to, to implement the huge cost of putting that in when, you know, trees are gonna provide some, some growth there, but, you know, it, the amount of parking lot that's gonna be there and the amount of, and the type of business, I think you're gonna be fine with the, the trees and landscaping.
No, it's just decorative rocks and boulders. There's not any trees.
Oh, I thought it, I thought I did say that, sorry.
Cause he can't water the trees.
Is that how you've always spelled your business name, E L E?
No.
I'm like, I swear it was E L I.
Ten, ten, ten years ago, when that same architect spelt elite, he spelt it wrong and I have never corrected him.
So Amy, if I understand this correctly, in, in order to say waive the parking requirement, we need a substantive reason that we would do that.
Um, hold on just a second, there's, cause the, the code, just a second. Cause the code allows you to make an adjustment to the parking requirements. Hold on, I'm just looking up the code real quick. As to what the specific language allows for.
What George is saying is what's in the, the staff notes.
Well, the staff notes talk about that the exception will not substantially affect the general plan, that spirit of the land use ordinance is observed and that there are special circumstances attached to the property that generally, that do not generally apply to other, you know, to other projects, which because of the use, you can make that finding.
So Amy?
Yes.
To shift back to the landscaping, but in our notes, it does say that the petitioner is asking the planning commission to adjust the landscaping requirement to allow for using just decorative rock and boulders and plants or trees. So are you planning on putting any trees, just decorative rock?
Where plants and trees came from, yeah.
Alright.
I apologize, that's a typo on my part.
Oh, and that's fine, that's why, that's where I got it.
Yeah, so I apologize for that. It should just say rocks and boulders.
Okay.
I think that, yeah, if you look at the staff recommendation at the end, it says about that they, that you should adjust the landscaping requirement to allow just one landscaping element, decorative rocks and boulders is shown on the site plan, based on the findings that there's not secondary water at the site.
I would agree with that, I think, given the circumstances and the, you know, the difficulty in getting secondary water over there, it makes it kind of a very unique situation. And on top of that, we are trying to be water-wise within the city. So I'm pretty much in favor of allowing that one to go through.
Yeah, I think it's interesting that, that we have a landscape requirement to put in stuff that requires water. At the same time, on the opposite side of that, we've got this need to conserve water, so.
I noticed, I noticed the hypocrisy here.
When anybody comes in and says, hey, I'm gonna put some rocks there and I'm gonna conserve some water, I'm, I'm not only good with that, I'm happy to hear that. A lot of these decorative rocks look really, really good.
Well, and I'm not, yeah, we're gonna put some, some boulders in there, make it look just like the adjacent property and I think it turned out pretty nice, especially for a body shop at the end of the day, it's, yeah.
It's been a couple of days in Moab last week and there was a lot of rock there and it's beautiful.
They are, they are.
I think a lot of the reason we have that though is this does it adjacent to residential. And I think they're, you know, maybe they're. And I think they're, you know, maybe their appearance is what we wanna try and preserve too. So I see the reason, but I also see the hypocrisy in it.
And historically, your site looks really good. I think you've shown.
Well, and.
You can make it look really nice.
At at the end of the day, the business isn't appearance business and you you've gotta keep things looking nice to. Make people think you're going to make their stuff look nice.
Well, I think originally going back to your original proposal to put this business in there, there was plans to put in a water feature.
Well, and I I would still like to do that too, um. I'm I uh it it that kind of got shelved a little bit uh as I've grown faster than. Almost I was capable of growing, but um I I still have some ideas about that. That that I would like to incorporate into this new building, uh but that'll be down the road when I have a little more money. I gotta get the thing built first.
And and again, there's water.
Yeah, well, it doesn't have to have water. Um, I could do a, I the the idea was I wanted to put. A car up on some rocks so people could see it from from the road. Was the most important thing, a waterfall on the front of it could have been a, I could do a fire pit on the front of it, I could do about anything on the front of it to make people. Stop and take notice.
Alright, so it looks like the recommendations are good and then number three where it says shall adjust the size of the wall sign to comply with the side ordinance, so. We could just leave that as is because by the time he. It'll be hopefully amended, so that's.
Are you ready for a motion?
I think so. Any other discussion? Anybody other, anybody else have questions or? Okay, with that, I'm ready for a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to grant final approval of the commercial site plan for Elite Customs Parcels. Number zero eight zero two two zero zero one seven and zero eight two two. Zero eight zero two two zero zero four two in West Haven. Subject to the conditions recommended by staff in the staff report, there were five conditions in there.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Wait, wait, real quick, um. Part of the staff recommendation was about adjusting the parking requirement, but if you chose to. So can you amend your um that you're fine with the parking that is outlined on this this site plan?
The site plan, um.
Want to with, does she have to withdraw her?
Um, I'll withdraw. Has to amend, amend it.
Um, I'll amend my original motion to add that we are um the planning commission would be. Would approve of the parking requ- uh the parking that is on the site plan that was submitted by the petitioner. Um, as is adjusting the parking requirement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion passes and that was um. My Commissioner Simpson and I couldn't get who the second was. Yes, I've got him, making sure you got, did you get the names on, okay, I'm gonna get better about that. Okay, motion passes, thank you.
I don't have to go to city council, correct?
That is correct, you're done.
Well, I can buy a building permit.
Then I think you're good, but just wait till after December.
On the sign.
On the sign, oh, on the sign, yeah, the building's made good.
The building.
Yeah, just just kind of take your time on the sign.
I can come in here tomorrow, get a building permit, start digging a hole.
Well, no, you have to, you know, you have to apply for the building permit and address the um engineering that. The all the engineering issues that um the city engineer had listed out.
And I was under the impression those engine, those those issues had been addressed.
Um, well, like I said, you just need to um check with the city engineer about it.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
She knows that.
Okay, moving on to um agenda item number six, discussion and action for preliminary site plan approval. For an electrical and heating appliances and fixture cells and services. Do you wanna give us a background, Amy or?
Yeah, so um this got brought to you in August initially and it ended up being tabled because there were issues regarding. An incomplete um application because we um we hadn't received the landscaping plan, we hadn't received the sign. Um, plan, we, there was an access issue um to be able to get in and out of the site. Um, and those, all of those things have been um dealt with now at this point. Um, Robin, do you wanna pull up the um the site plan, the. That shows. Um. The building and then the access. Um, at this time, they've addressed the um parking, it requires um. It's currently showing thirty-five parking stalls, um but there are. But um that's the number that they need, um when it comes to their site, their sign. Plan, um it is the si- the size that is required by the um, the. Um, the regula- this, the current sign regulations. Um, they have reduced it, they had to ask for a bigger one. Um, and they too, you know, by the time that final hits, if they, if we passed it, hopefully we've passed that um fix. Then they could have the one that they're originally submitted. Um, but right now they are in compliance with that. The access road um shown um is. So if you look at the, at um that access road. Cause right now we don't know whether or not the road, um that other road is gonna go in. Um, the hope is possibly, but there has been, there's. There's just been issues regarding acquisition. Um, and so that's why there was a requirement that um the access that they had originally cited as temporary. Be put as the their permanent access into the um into the site. Um, so right now that road is, that's what it's being shown, um and. And that is um what's going to proceed. Their landscaping plan has been submitted and it meets city requirements, it shows the percentages and the types of plants that they're going to um put in. Um, there are breaks in the facade, um and you know, the um type of. Of materials that they're um at, they're planning on using fits within our um our design requirements. Um, cause they've shown the ratio and percentages of the materials and that's been um satisfied. The um currently, uh and there is an issue. There is not detailed fencing shown other than security fencing between the site and the residential lots and before final can be given. That buffering including fencing needs to be addressed along with the uh, you know, when they bring in the. The final landscaping plan, um the dumpster location, that's been completed. Um, there's an additional issue that was discovered um. That the petitioner had accidentally filled out the affidavit part of the site plan and and design review application. And they had incorrectly checked both boxes and so that application needs to be amended. Because currently the application is showing that um. They are not agreeing to be bound by um the requirements. And I'm sure that that was just a mistake that just needs to be, is easily remedied, but for um. You know, for making sure that we have a um, an accurate record, that needs to be. That affidavit just needs to be amended so it shows that um. It's filled out correctly and and that they're willing to be bound by by the city rules, so. Um, the staff recommendations are that before the final approval can be given. That um they submit a lighting plan for um both onsite and streetlights. That the fencing and buffering from adjacent residential properties be dealt with, um that they submit um. The access easement legal description um for the city engineer to re- view and approve. Um, that they submit all civil drawings um to receive the ci- city engineer's approval of all site plan designs. Um, that the petitioner shall submit all required will serve letters to the city, that they shall fix their site plan and design review application. Um, or that they address any objection that they have to the process, so I don't know if they have an objection to the process, my assumption was it was just a mistake. Um, that the, whether or not you guys want to have a traffic study. Um, that's whether or not you deem that necessary or not for the final. Um, right now, um staff is showing that they should be granted preliminary approval. Um, subject to the conditions recommended by staff for the final. I mean, right now they they have everything they need for the the preliminary.
Okay, well, should I have him come up?
Yep.
Okay, do we have someone here representing? I don't know the name, um just electrical and heating appliances and fixture cells.
Yeah, Tucker Jardine from Lynn Woodward Electric.
Do you have any questions concerning the staff recommendations?
Uh, really about the only one we have, oh, there's a couple. Uh, the, it was a mistake on that petition or on that application. I told my business partner to sign everything and send it in while I was out of town and.
He signed everything.
Checked everything.
Everything was signed.
Yes, he did.
So that was a mistake. How do we amend that? What is the correct process?
Need to come back in and fill out a new one.
Just fill out a new one and bring it in, okay, we can do that. Um, on the site lighting uh note that said we needed site and street lighting. I don't believe there should be any street lighting, we only have thirty-three feet of frontage. So I don't think that should be a, an issue.
Even though um. You know, being able to turn into to that location. And I don't know what the engineer is, this is all a final thing, this is not a preliminary thing, I don't know what.
And we are still waiting on Ed's comments. We're, we're hoping to have those before this meeting, but we have not seen his comments, so we're waiting to address those. But when it come, eh, in reference to that road, it's, in my opinion, it needs to be one or the other. Either we have permanent access and we comply with that permanent access with what we've shown. Or the road goes in and that becomes another access point, but. It's got your, eh, I don't think I can be required to do both at the same time.
Well, the, right now, um, the access that the this access in off of.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred, that has to be the permanent at access because.
I agree.
We don't have the other.
Yeah.
Anywhere near a point where they could access.
Yeah, so when that road does come through, I'm sure it'll be the city's responsibility to place those streetlights as needed along that new road.
Yeah, my only concern would be on the eighteen hundred if 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 Ed would require a street light there, since that is gonna be your permanent. Um, where there's not an ETA on the other, the other road. Um, I'm just trying to think, I take that road to get to my home. And there's some okay lighting along the ivory subdivision there, but I don't know that I would say that on the opposite side of the street. It would be substantial if if it were dark.
Yeah.
To see, so I I if if Ed recommends it, then I would, I would say that that's what we proceed with.
So our plan was to put lighting along that access road.
Okay.
Eh, there's two or three light poles, I can't remember what, with full cutoff shields on both sides, so.
So it's just straight down?
Just right on that road.
Okay.
We've got really good relationship with both neighbors on each side and we wanna make sure they're happy.
I I would, like I said, if eh if Ed thinks that it's a a good idea to have it on eighteen hundred, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Just knowing.
Probably accomplish that with our lighting on the access road.
Yeah.
So it just lights up that entrance.
Yeah.
That's what I would hope for.
Yeah, and I think you know an electrician.
What's that?
I think you know an electrician.
I think I know a good one.
Probably where to get some parts.
Yeah, so electrical for this building's gonna be, gonna be awesome.
Yeah, but what we we thank you for your patience. I know you've been back and forth with stuff, it it's kind of a. It can be a a frustrating process, but but it's for a reason and you know, you've got a a good thing going here. It's gonna be nice to see something go in there. It's gonna make use of the land, so.
Well, we're excited.
Yeah, and these items are just kind of final check offs to have for for final, so.
Okay.
I think.
We will get those addressed and put on the prints.
Yeah, you have everything for preliminary, I think these are just notes for when you come back for final. Just make sure those things are included. Or resolved with Ed or whoever else needs to review them.
Anything else? Uh, my only, my only comment, Amy, this goes to staff. We have one, the, one of the detrimental impacts is lighting, so we're asking him to like control his light, but also add light on the street. Um, if you go to the potential detrimental impacts. So if he's got lighting already in the plan, which I can't see because I can't.
Well, that there isn't lighting in the plan right now.
Oh, none on the street, on the access street?
No, there there's not, that's what we were saying is that for the final, they need to provide their lighting plan for the site and the and the street, just so that we can.
And that's something that you're planning on doing anyways.
It's al- it's already finished, I just, it just wasn't part of the submission.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question, eh, a a a um, a procedural question. If we've got questions that are not for the petitioner, do we save those until later in the meeting? You know, until we're through questioning the petitioner or do we ask those now?
I think now would be fine, um who do you need to ad- address him, to us or to Amy or?
I I'm not sure, I I I I just, I'm a little bit conflicted here. Because on the one hand, this looks like a great use of a space, a piece of property that's kind of. Landlocked. And so that looks really good. On the other hand, what we're doing is we're. We're putting the the access through a residential area. And that, I I know the long term plan is for that road, but we don't know if or when it will come through the the new road. But um, so so right now, we're, we're gonna run commercial access through a neighborhood. And that seems a little bit. Uncomfortable to me.
It's zone commercial.
Yeah. It it, I I live over by this and and, I mean. He it's, he's well within his rights because he owns that that access and that to get to that lot and. You know, it. It, looking at it now, it seems out of place. Looking at it in ten years, when that commercial probably finishes going through to the south, it fits. Um, and that is all gonna be contingent upon that road, the new road going through, but whether it's in five years, ten years, fifteen years. Everything to the south of this is commercial across the canal and will be commercial forever. So right now it doesn't, it looks out of place and I hope for my well being that that permanent access isn't off of eighteen hundred forever. But I also recognize that the land is zoned for commercial and, you know, I'd rather see. A nice facility going in there than something that's just, you know, an eyesore, so I. I get what you're saying, that access is kind of an eyesore. I think the most important piece of this puzzle is the residents to either side. And it seems like that isn't an issue with with those neighbors.
No, it's not.
That the the only issue and and like I said, I'm gonna defer to Ed on this, is that the entering and exiting with proper lighting. You know, especially this time of the year when five o'clock, the the lighting's dim and stuff. I just don't, I I don't see how we can object to him using his. Access to his property.
The big thing is, you know, getting instead of just a security fence, you know, doing like probably a vinyl fence that. Is a pri- you know, is some type of privacy so that the residents aren't having to watch trucks go down.
Yeah, and I envision that there's nothing semi-wise that's gonna happen after five o'clock in the evening.
Oh, no, I'm not, I mean. We'll get one a day and it'll be right in the middle of the day, right at lunchtime is when they like to come.
Yeah, that's usually what they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I think looking at it now through what's there, it does seem out of place, but in the future, it's. I hope that that road can goes through sooner than later because that's gonna can, that's gonna help the congestion along eighteen hundred tremendously.
So can I ask a clarifying question about what you're you're saying?
Yeah.
So I I get it when the new road goes through, perfect.
Yeah.
But that, that. Access on eighteen hundred south. Is that zoned commercial where those homes are?
That is probably a better question for Amy, but. I would think that with. I would think that with the over, not the overlay, but what was there before, I don't know how that works, Amy. How does that work with the flag lot that's, the lots on commercial and the access is residential?
This particular piece of property is split between A1 and, and, um, C2 zoning. But I can't remember, I'm trying to see if I can find the zoning, um, map real quick to see where the split is. Cause I think that the front part of it is, is actually the commercial and it's the back part that is the, um, is the commercial, or sorry, the, the agricultural. Um, but hold on, let me see if I can find it real quick.
We have it here.
Can I interject just to clarify for you guys? So that whole piece was re, we had to choose one or the other, A1 or the commercial zone. He chose the commercial, which then rezoned the whole parcel to commercial. So the piece that he owns that has access off eighteen hundred is commercial all the way to eighteen.
Were they, was it all one parcel though?
Uh, well, it.
There was three parcels there if I'm not correct.
Sorry, two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, there's actually two. So where that residential home is, you can see it really great out. That had a one acre parcel direct, just landlocked around that home. But there were two parcels, but the Geneva is correct. It did, we did have a split and they told us we could pick one or the other. We picked the other, so I agree, it should be all the way to the access point because it was the same parcel.
He owns that access. It's not, not access to his land, he owns that access.
Deed of property.
Yeah.
Okay, see, and that's another clarification. I, I thought I remembered, um, we're probably supposed to have you identify yourself for the, the record, but, um.
Geneva Blanchard, thirteen fifty-two West, ten fifty North.
Okay.
We just know her, she just seems familiar to us, so I forget.
Yeah. I, I thought I remembered from your presentation previously back in, uh, August, that you were going to have to get an easement from the neighbors, not that you owned that. So I'm, I may be mistaken.
There is a portion of it that will be.
We're increasing the width of that to accommodate the fire marshal's requirements. So we've got an easement, we've got, we've negotiated with the neighbor for another ten feet of easement. Basically, the negotiation is if we put a real nice asphalt road into his property, give him access off that, he's, he will allow us to take the rest of that property and make that whole width of that thirty-two, well, thirty-three feet, that road.
Okay, that helps me clarify what I was remembering from.
Yeah, but the original twenty-two feet, twenty-two feet, ten inches, that was deed of property.
Okay, perfect. That makes a lot of, a lot of difference in my mind.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, how many of these large semi-trucks will be going down this access road and how, how often?
We prob, on average, we probably have three to four a week is all.
That's not what you said in, in August, though.
Probably one a day.
Yeah, if I rec, if I recall, you said one per week. I may be wrong.
I said we have deliveries about one a day. And I don't, I mean, some weeks we'll have zero, some weeks we'll have two a day, three days a week. We'll have six or seven trucks. It, it varies, but that, I mean, I don't think I've changed my, what I've said. That's really what it is. I mean, on average, it, we work four days a week. And so if we have a truck a day, that's probably an average. But that, if it comes down to big fifty, what is it, fifty-four foot semi, those probably are more like one a week. Most of our deliveries are box trucks that are shorter than a fifty-four foot semi.
Jeff, um, something that, um, Ed, engineer Ed has been working with and also, um, fire marshal is making sure that the entrance way is big enough for a semi to be able to, you know, swing into it without, you know, going over the curb or anything like that. And being able to fit, um, a fire truck down that lane along with, if there is a semi truck, um, on that lane at the same time.
Yeah, the other thing I'm questioning is making a right-hand turn from the wrong side of that road.
Well, that's, you know, if you're concerned about the possible traffic, that might be why you may want to have a traffic, um, study.
Study, yes, which is probably my rec, well, it is my recommendation before we approve this.
Well, that has to do with the final, that doesn't have to do with, um, this preliminary. They have everything that they need for the preliminary site plan approval.
Well, this, the staff report says it's something that we should think about putting in as a condition. So that's why I'm mentioning it.
It said, subject to the following items being addressed before final approval can be given. So, and it says that staff, a traffic study may be required if the planning commission deems it necessary.
Correct, that's why I'm recommending it.
And can I interject on the traffic study? So traffic, the traffic study will generate off of current load. Because that building is not there, um, it won't pick up what you're asking for through a traffic study. Um, we're happy to talk, we have a traffic engineer that can put some analysis together to, for you, a little letter based on his, uh, business use and needs. But a true traffic study won't give you the numbers you're looking for. They're going to give you residential numbers that are currently there. So I, I just want you to be aware of that. A traffic study is not going to produce what he's asking for.
Could I?
Yeah, sorry, say your name and address, Jim.
Jim Flynn, fifteen seventy-six Far West Drive. The, uh, the traffic study usually deals with volumes and those kind of aspects. It doesn't, this is a low-volume operation, so having the traffic study isn't really an applicable thing in this case. The big thing is what we have already laboriously gone through, and that's the truck maneuverability diagrams. And that's what led to the whole additional ten extra feet. So that was, that was really the, the traffic topic was the truck, truck maneuverability. And that's, that's why he's getting the easement.
So, can I ask a question about the, what I think is the maneuverability chart or? Um, there's a chart that's two more pages in the, the packet from what you've got up on the screen.
Is it this one that you're looking at?
Yes. And one more. Okay, so on that one, this confuses me a little bit. If I understand what it's saying. What I think this is saying is that depending on which direction you're going on eighteen hundred south, you might have to exit from the wrong side of the road. Is that what that's telling me?
From his access?
Yes.
So, speaking of someone that's had to drive a long trailer, and I can guarantee you that every resident along that access road that has a fifth wheel, you swing wide left to get to where you're not running over a curb. So obviously, a semi-trailer truck driver is going to feel comfortable that he's not going to exit on the eighteen hundred if there's traffic turning left onto that access road. He's going to wait shy of that exit. When it's clear, he's going to swing left and then take his trailer back to the east or turn right. That's, I mean, that's standard practice with a large trailer. You'll see that coming in and out of a Walmart, in and out of a Home Depot. I mean, that's just, they have to do that because there's no right-hand turn anywhere that a semi-trailer can do in the right lane.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to make sure that I was, that's what I thought this chart was telling me.
It does look that way, but if you look at that right out, there's a small green line that goes. That small green line that goes is the, the direction he's going to turn. So the one that comes off of the, the top side of that right out, there's a green line. That's kind of where the back tires of his semi-trailer are going to follow. His front's going to follow the right, the ones that, from his left track. Just because that's the way that those large trailers track. You gotta give it a wide berth.
I wanted to make sure I was understanding what that was showing.
Yeah.
So Amy, I, I guess my question is, one of the conditions would be that, or could be that we, um, require a traffic study be done prior to final approval?
That is something you could require, or you could require, um, some type of a, um, traffic analysis, be done, like what, um, Geneva was suggesting, that's something not quite as, um, intense as a traffic study.
Jeff, if you don't mind me asking, what's your, what, what, what are you thinking that a traffic study is going to produce?
I'm just very concerned about these large trucks pulling out onto, um, eighteen hundred and creating a potential safety problem for the residents of the community.
Yeah.
And a traffic study isn't going to show that, but we're happy to provide a letter from a traffic engineer concerning safety of, you know, a low-volume business.
Yeah.
So the traffic.
Right, well, I, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Go ahead, please.
Oh, sorry.
Traffic study means a big thing to us.
Yeah.
And I think we're, what we're saying is, this is a more focused thing, working out with Ed type of situation.
Yeah.
We heard the word traffic study in the, we go down several rat holes.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, there's lots of semi-trucks that pull in and out of this road all the time with, with Altaview concrete just to the east that have double, they're pulling double side dumps coming in and out of there. It, semi-truck, the, the traffic on this road is, is not out of control. Um, in fact, right at this point is one of those speed monitor signs that usually gets people to, to slow down quite a bit. Um, I get where you're coming from, Jeff, and I think that your intentions are great. I think maybe the word that they're trying to suggest is a traffic analysis versus a traffic study, that's something that they could suggest that would put your concerns at ease?
Yeah, I, yeah, my, again, my concern is always safety. Doing it, you know, at, at this point, it would be pointless and I would rather see it be done once we get closer to, uh, final rather than doing it at a preliminary level.
So, based on what I'm understanding is we're already very, very close to final. So I don't, I, I think we need to submit whatever you're asking for, but.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, personally, I think a traffic analysis of just saying, this is a, safety can be accomplished with, with what you're providing would put a lot of hearts at ease. Right, Jeff?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think that's fine as long as it's worked out with Ed and, um, you know, it's, again, to me, it's always about safety, so that's where I'm coming from.
Uh, you know, I, I just want to weigh in for two seconds and I appreciate like, because my concern was for safety also. When we did this one the first time, I was concerned about the semis being able to pull in and pull out on that road, having a wide enough road and making sure that it was safe to come in and come out. Um, and I'm, I'm just like talking to commission members here, just conflicted a little bit on the fact that we're, we've got this commercial zone, but we're also then worried about, we're maybe not going to let them use the commercial zone because we don't like the road access that goes into it. And so I don't, I don't, it doesn't seem fair, and I don't know if fair is the word that I'm looking for, like a, a traffic, not a traffic study, what, what's the word?
Traffic analysis.
A traffic analysis might be the way to go, just, just to ensure safety, if that's something that we can do, um, while at the same time allowing them to go forward, um, with something that is legal and is in their right in that zone to do. So, so, you know, if that will get us to the compromise in that meeting point so that we can go forward for them and they can do something that, you know, they're legally have that right to do, then I'm happy with that. Amy, is that, do you feel like that's something that would, would give us the desired outcome? Like kind of do that compromise from what Jeff was worried about in the safety issue along, but at the same time allowing what's, yeah, I mean, you could, okay in that zone.
You could, um, you could, um, do preliminary approval, um, with the condition that they, at final, they provide, um, site plan, or sorry, a traffic analysis, well, before the final.
What, just along those lines, there's been a tremendous amount of goodwill going, going to this. I don't know if you've seen the site, there's, there's a pole line right down the middle. And what's in the development of this plan? We've, we've worked with Rocky Mountain Power and that's all going to be undergrounded. And that all led to the thirty-two foot wide, uh, proposed road. So this wasn't, all of that underlying background has been put into what we're doing now. I just think it's important to recognize that, that those power lines are being undergrounded at a very great expense.
Yeah, I, I don't think anyone on that, and I might be speaking out of term, but I don't think any of the commission members think that you guys are skipping corners or cutting corners or skipping any steps. I, I truly do think that you guys are, what you've come up with, with that lot is, is going to be a great benefit to the city. So I don't, I don't think anyone is thinking that. I think commission member Reed is, is always been the benchmark for safety and all of that. So it's, it's all for the, the welfare of the citizens, so.
We appreciate that.
I personally don't see the need for a traffic study. If you want to do a letter, that's fine, but.
I was going to suggest maybe leaving it up to Ed. If, if an analysis is required, if he sees an issue or, he deals with this far more often than any of us do. And if he sees that this is standard practice and, and that, maybe that, that we leave that up to Ed.
Yeah, I mean, if, put up a sign that says semis exiting and, or entering and leaving this road. Yeah, those are my thoughts. Safe device.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
I'm always, I'm all, I have a great deal of respect and confidence in Ed, so I'm, I'm fine with going in that direction. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood where I'm coming from, as usual.
Good questions. Are we, anything else for discussion? I'm good. With that, somebody ready to give us a, a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to grant preliminary approval of the commercial site plan for LWE located at approximately twenty-two thirty-one West, eighteen hundred South, West Haven. Parcels one five zero seven, one zero 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 one and one five zero seven, one zero zero three zero, subject to the conditions recommended by staff in the staff report, with the exception of the traffic study, uh, will be left up to the city engineer, or traffic analysis will be left up to the city engineer, um, uh, to, if deemed necessary.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hepworth and a second by Commissioner, I forgot your last name, Amanda Reina. See, I'm trying to make him meet. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Aye. Sorry, I'm slow.
Okay, unanimous, so motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to additionally thank you. We did ask you a ton of questions, but I think it's kind of been indicated, it's our responsibility as planning commission to make sure that we understand what we're approving. And so we appreciate your patience in, in all the questions that we asked you this evening.
Wow, thank you very much. I appreciate your help on getting this passed through.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number seven, discussion and action on preliminary and site plan approval for commercial restaurant with drive-through. Amy? So this is for preliminary and final, um, for a Panda Express. Um, which is not a secret since the sign plan is in the, uh, is in the packet. Um, so, and, and I do believe that, yes, Xavier Gavin is here also on Zoom to be able to address any questions. But, um, it meets the parking regulations, um, it's complied with that, um, ordinance. The, um, the parking, they, it's not that their proposed parking stalls are the right, um, size along with the right number. The sign plan, um, complies with the ordinance, the landscaping, um, appears to satisfy all the requirements. that it'll have trees, decorative rock, shrubs and grasses. Um, the building layout, um, there are breaks in the facade, which are very accomplished by varying building heights and changes in materials. The, um, the materials that they've, um, are proposing to use, that they are, um, they, the plan clearly outlines the percentage of those materials and the architectural features and they're, um, according to the, the, um, what is required. And so they've done, they've done everything that they have been required to do under the code to have both preliminary and final at the same time. Um, we do allow that in our code to have both at the same time. Um, I know that Ed has, it appro-, has, um, approved. But they do have to, prior to the building permit submittal, they just need to provide the city with the following, the final site construction drawings, um, and the culinary water and sewer letters of, of avail-, of availability and service. But they have their other, um, well-serve letters, so the only thing they're missing is the, um, the West Haven Special Service District letter and the culinary water, the, um, and they are already within the, um, Central Weber, um, district, Special Service District. They're, they've already, that, this parcel's already been annexed into that.
So it's almost like they've built one of these before.
It's almost like that. So if you have.
Prepared.
Hey, if you have any questions, like I said, Xavier Gavin, um, the project representative is on Zoom.
Yeah, it looks very thorough, looks very complete, looks really nice.
Well, this is going in on that new road that joins to, uh, four thousand south, is that correct?
Straight across from Hunter Drive, right? It looks like they.
A, a little bit further east on.
Oh, is it a little further east?
On the north side of the road, is that?
Hey, I'm looking at it wrong.
Yeah, it's not quite, it, it doesn't, Hunter Drive doesn't, it's, yeah, it is further east on four thousand.
Thank you.
What west is it?
I, I guess the only question I have is when, what's the ETA on breaking ground?
Yeah, so, uh, sorry, uh, so this is, my name is Xavier Gavin. I'm with Clover Architects on behalf of Panda Express. Let me know if you can hear me, okay, if there's any. Okay, perfect. I also have Howard Eshram, or, or some on, he's with our civil engineer, Bowman. Um, but, uh, yeah, our, the intent is to kind of begin in the, uh, early summer, uh, late spring of twenty twenty-five, you know, for, uh, weather and, you know, permitting process.
Perfect. And when would that give us, uh, preliminary or estimated opening?
Eager for restaurants in West Haven, can you?
I can, um, yeah, I, uh, so I would have to kind of check back with the team, but typically it's about a, a little under a year or a year. Obviously with, you know, weather permitting, um, for, for opening. So hopefully, or, uh, late twenty twenty-five, early twenty twenty-six, is what we'd be looking at.
I, I'm not gonna put a pressure on you, but I'm pretty sure In-N-Out went in in like four months in Leighton, so.
Okay.
It probably just felt that way versus.
It took them fifteen years to get there, but, no, we're, we're happy to have more, um, commercial restaurants in the area. Um, we'd like, uh, there's a lot of us that spend a lot of money in neighboring cities that would rather spend it here in West Haven. So it's, it's, we're glad that this is coming and you guys have got a good spot to do this in, so.
Yeah, any other questions?
I don't have any.
I don't either. Jeff?
How's the parking, Jeff?
It looks good. Initially, I had a question about, uh, tree placement, but I looked up the tree online and I don't think it'll be a problem. It was right at the end of coming out of the drive-through, but I don't think it's a problem, so. And I'm just as in a hurry to have Panda Express as you guys are, so. Let's do it.
Yeah, and I do like the double drive-through, because I know some of the others that I've been drive-through, it really spills out. The one in Clinton is kind of disaster, so, not a disaster, it's just, it's hard to get in and out of. So I like this one that it's not gonna spill over and cause congestion back on the main road, so I do like this setup. In comparison to another one that I've been to, so, yeah, I think it all looks good. Anything else?
Nope.
If, with that, uh, entertain a motion? Anybody's ready?
I'll make a motion that the Kenny, the Planning Commission grants preliminary and final approval of the commercial site plan for Panda Express located at approximately thirty forty-two west, four thousand south, parcel number zero eight seven zero six zero 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 one, West Haven, subject to the conditions recommended by staff in the staff report.
Is it, the parcel's different in our?
Second.
Okay, it's just different in our agenda, though, the site, the parcel number is different.
Which one is right, Amy? Do you know? Um, do you know, Robin, which one is the?
Sorry, didn't mean to cut. Noticed it was different.
Hmm, where are you looking?
Which one's the, the parcel number in the staff report is different than the parcel number on the agenda? Uh, it's quite possible that the agenda is correct and not the.
I think the agenda is incorrect because the final site plan, the, the staff memo at the top and the bottom are.
They match.
Zero zero nine zero?
No, they're zero 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 one.
Okay, 'cause in the, yeah, in the site plan, site review, it says.
Can, the one I, the one I just said was zero 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 one. Can you look up GeoGizmo real quick?
It's zero zero nine zero, 'cause on the, their application, it's zero zero nine zero.
Okay.
Then the staff reports the, the wrong one. I have it pulled up too, but I can't find out which, I can't tell which one it is.
Yeah, as long as their, their site plan and design review application is correct, that's, it's the zero zero nine zero.
I'm still gonna second whichever one you guys decide on.
Four two, um, it's, it's zero 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 one, is it CFT? MB Development LLC, is that the right one?
All right, with the county.
Yes.
It's zero, yeah, zero eight seven.
So.
Zero six, zero zero zero.
So as.
Application is incorrect, then.
No, application is correct that I'm looking at.
Look at site plan and design review?
Uh huh. Let's see, I'm gonna go back.
Yeah, the very top right corner.
Oh, on, on theirs, yeah, it does on theirs. On, on ours, it has the right number on the one that's.
Yeah, you gotta go over down.
A little bit more.
So which one, which one am I using, people?
Well, on the county, it's zero eight seven zero six zero zero zero.
Yeah, it is.
I, I think it's.
It's both.
Does it have two?
I think it's on the other side of twenty-nine seventy-five.
There's the one across, right next to that, Robin, to the right.
Yeah, 'cause it's not just right across from, um.
Two down from.
One, right there, right there.
Oh.
Well, the three zero four two address is that square that she was on originally. Thirty forty-two west. And that's the address on the site plan, so which, which one is it? Well, and there's two different addresses, too.
So, Amy, on their site plan and design review application, it says a portion of zero eight zero two nine zero zero nine zero.
So I can, and I, I'd be able to provide some clarity. Uh, so this was, uh, CFT recently closed over the summer, and I think that happened during, um, kind of our preliminary and final review. So I think, uh, I, I missed who mentioned it among the commission members. But, uh, yeah, it was originally designed, uh, brought to planning for preliminary and as a portion of. Um, and then with closing the summer, um, we, was updated to the zero 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 one, which is what we currently show on our, uh, well, what I have is our current survey that, that was conducted.
That makes sense, 'cause they submitted this clear back in, was it February or March?
Okay.
Uh, March, yeah.
Then I will keep my motion as stated.
Yes, yours was correct.
Thank you for checking.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Simpson.
And I second.
Okay, and Commissioner Reed with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, site plan is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
And agenda item number eight. Done them all tonight.
Okay, I, uh, will sit this one out.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hepworth and a second by Commissioner Reina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.